Okay, we'll get right to it because we went over a little bit getting ready. So Helen Colton-Harris will give her update.
Thank you.
Good morning, councilors. How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning, Derek. I appreciate the feedback. Thank you. So first of all, as of today, the city has 621 cases that are positive. I want to just say that the states put up their numbers. And as of yesterday, they had Springfield at 546, and we had 601. That's a 55 case difference. I talked with the epidemiologists at the state level last night, and they said that they are cleaning up their database. They may have reported some individuals twice. However, we are going to reconcile that. But I should tell you that I am going to leave our numbers where they are until I can reconcile with the state. Till I can reconcile with the state. So right now, I'm keeping the 221 number as of yesterday. The other thing I should say is that through our database, we have recognized that there are 380 unique locations in the city of Springfield where there are positive coronavirus cases. So 360 unique individual places. However, there may be more than one positive in that particular household, or it could be a long-term care facility. Test kits were delivered to the shelter for our homeless population yesterday. The medical staff is meeting today. We are going to talk about the process for testing the population. So we haven't started testing yet, but we will soon. And we need to just make sure our medical providers are comfortable with the process that's going to be used. Lot of calls coming through the hotline about businesses who are nonessential, who are opened up. We have been sending the environmental health team to those places to remind nonessential business they should not be open. I must tell you, this is very difficult. It's difficult to maintain less than 10 people in one place, making sure nonessential businesses are closed down. It has become a full-time, round-the-clock job for the staff. Elder affairs delivered, last two days, 116 meals per day, breakfast and lunch to seniors. Greater Springfield Senior Services has stepped up their calling to seniors as well. So we think the city is pretty blanketed as far as seniors are concerned and individuals hopefully reaching out to them. I'm going to stop there and let you ask me any questions that you might have. I could talk for a couple of days. But in respectful of your time, why don't I stop there? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other updates from the administration, Tom? Or do you want to just get right to questions?
I think TJ is going to give a brief update from financial.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner.
You're welcome.
So the other day, there was an economic roundtable hosted by Senate Ways and Means, House Ways and Means, and Secretary A&amp;F. Their goal of that was to come up with a new consensus revenue figure for the state. As you may recall, consensus revenue that happened, it happened in early July, which the economy was vastly different than it is right now. All indications that we're heading into a recession as deep as 2008, perhaps as deep as the Great Depression. So it's very bleak. The hope is that this recession is known as a V-shaped recession, where it goes down fast, it comes back fast. You may recall, 2008 was a U shape with a long, protracted recovery, at least for the city of Springfield and for everybody else. Federal stimulus money is flowing. They project unemployment to be between 14% and 20%. And that they actually say state revenues could be projected down to be $4 billion. So we got guidance that at minimum, for planning purposes, we should start looking at a 14% reduction in unrestricted general government aid. That equates to $5.6 million. So the state revenue is having a fallout that we cannot quantify at this time. The administration, we had a separate call with the mayors yesterday with Secretary Heffernan and Sean Cronin from Division of Local Services. They did not have much to report on other than really, as the House and Senate figure out what they're doing, is to brace for the challenges of the upcoming fiscal year. Based upon that, the mayor, on my advice, instituted a spending freeze and a hiring freeze for all nonessential, non-emergency items. And we can discuss that if there are specific questions. It's the fiscally responsible thing to do at this moment as we try to figure out what the FY '21 budget looks like. So that's kind of the big update. I have a lot more data and details if you want it, but I want to be respectful of the time and the questions.
Helen's got one more update, Collins, before we get to the questions.
Just wanted to make sure. I know you may know this, but we did get the test kits for the homeless that Congressman Neal was instrumental in getting into the city. You know, we've had such a hard time getting test kits to get folks tested. So we're very grateful. We have 300 that we're going to be able to utilize. So that's going to be a big help in helping us with our homeless population. Thank you. I just wanted to give that update. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we'll get right into the questions from my colleagues. We'll start with Counselor Fenton.
No questions.
Sorry. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I ask a question, I just want to comment and give kudos to the administration for ensuring that the first responders have the adequate amount of PPE protections and N95. I was pleased to see how the business community stepped up and really helped us out with that. So I'm pretty grateful for that and kudos to everybody. Are we asking one question, Mr. President, or two?
Yes. One question would be preferred. And then what I'll do is I'll go in order so that everybody has an opportunity to ask at least one question. And then I'll ask you to raise your hands, and we'll do it that way. Once everybody's spoken.
Thank you. Just Commissioner, just a quick question. I've been hearing the possibility of people who are exposed to the coronavirus who have successfully resolved and are now tested negative for their back to work. I've been hearing that they are not sure if they did create immunity or if they could be re-exposed and re-infected to the virus. If that's the case, how are we planning for that? And I would like to hear some more comments on that.
So our best science is telling us that once an individual has been infected, that they have built up immunity and therefore do not, it is anticipated that they cannot be re-infected. As you know, this is a new virus, so we have much to learn about this virus and its impact on the population. But at this point, once an individual has gone back to work after the 14 days, it is the assumption that they are negative. As far as antibodies are concerned, there are tests being done across the country. Scientists are working on this. We currently don't have an antibody test to be able to market at this point. But there is a lot of that is going on nationally in labs across the country, looking for a vaccine and trying to do antibody testing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is also for the Commissioner. Commissioner, when you say that there are 621 cases in the city of Springfield, does that include people who have already recovered from COVID?
Yes, Counselor. That's all cases that we have determined since March 6. So yes, it does include those individuals who are positive and have gone back to work and have recovered.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Whitfield.
I'll circle back.
Okay. Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. My question is for Commissioner Colton-Harris. It's Hampden County ranked second in numbers of deaths, but seventh in confirmed cases in Massachusetts. I know in respect to Hampden County, it's bigger than the city of Springfield in the scope of work that you do. Most of these... And then when it comes to... Sorry, I was reading my question. My fault. Do we have data on like the racial disparities between, you know, the mortality rate? You said that you stated these hotspots were 300 individual areas. Do we have the... I know that I did an interview yesterday with some information of there's like specific neighborhoods that are seeing more of an uptick. Do you have any information on those, on that?
Can we, can councilors who are not speaking, if you can mute your phones, it would be greatly appreciated as we're hearing some background noise? Thank you.
Did you need me to repeat, Counselor?
No. I think I heard your first question was around, can we... Well, let's talk about the deaths first. So we know that Hampden County, Hoyoke Soldiers Home is in Hampden County. We also know we have many long-term care facilities who are seeing their, unfortunately, their residents are test positive and really succumb to the virus. We also know that in Long Meadow, we have had some concerns around their long-term facilities. So long-term care facilities, definitely Hoyoke Soldiers Home, that has increased the death rate in Hampden County, not just in the city of Springfield. The 380 that I named was unique places in the city where individuals live and/or reside who have tested positive for the virus. That's the 380. When we talk about communities of color, if you look at where the virus is in the city of Springfield, we know that the zip codes that are primarily impacted disproportionately do house individuals who are marginally housed, who are low income, and who are communities of color. I don't have specific information, but I know that based on the work that I've done over the years as far as health disparities in the city of Springfield is concerned.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Next in the queue, I have Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to everybody in the room for everything you're doing. I read in the press release, it sounds like through the congressman's support, we were able to receive about 300 test kits to be designated for the Triage Center. And I'm wondering if conversations have begun relative to what the priority or, you know, sort of plan for testing is. And I ask because I know I've been seeing reports out of Boston relative to their testing of around 800 members of the homeless population and finding really high positive rates, especially in asymptomatic individuals. And so what I'm wondering is, since I know Friends of the Homeless is somewhere around 150 beds, Taylor Street is somewhere around 40, I'm wondering if it doesn't make sense to test everyone there and then move forward from there, but certainly would defer to the medical experts. So just curious what the plan is.
Thank you. And that's an excellent question. As you know, we just found out that we had the test kits yesterday. The team is meeting today to have exactly that discussion. What is the process we're going to use for testing? Who is going to be tested? And one of the challenges, or at least one of the things we have to consider, Counselor, is staffing. If we find that we have positives in great numbers, we have to make sure that we have the staff in place to be able to care for those individuals because we're going to want to isolate them immediately. So those conversations are happening today. And I anticipate by the end of the day, I will be able to report on what the process is going to be for the tent, or the facility, or the Triage Center.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks to everybody at the table and more. My first question, I have three questions, but I'll just ask one now. TJ, last week, I asked about the process for ordering the PPE equipment and the frustrations that you had suffered and the subsequent orders that you put in that you thought would be fulfilled in seven to 10 days. So I'm just wondering if you know the status of that stuff.
Yeah, so we have probably a little longer than seven to 10 days. But right now, we've gotten indications from all our vendors that within the next probably week or so, they'll be here. You know, we have about 40,000 masks coming. The good news with the mayor's request for PPE and the masks, we have enough to get us through, even if there is a slight delay, to get us through where we need to be. So in that sense, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Brown.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, just an observation. When I've had to go to the store for any shopping needs or what have you, I've noticed that there are a lot of folks out there that are still not wearing at least any masks or gloves. And I know that, you know, some time ago, the mayor issued an advisory for protective masks to be worn when out. And I was just wondering, is there a magic number? Or has there been any more discussion? I'm making that in order, as other municipalities have, to make sure that folks are really wearing the PPE as they're around other folks.
Well, as you know, the governor, as well as the mayor, the mayor was actually the first one who went out on this, recommending the face coverings. And we are saying face coverings instead of masks because we just want individuals to cover their nose and mouth. We are seeing some individuals adhere, as you know, and others are not. Enforcing that is extremely difficult, as you might imagine. And so it is something that we are asking individuals to do, mandating it and assuring that it's happening. The only thing we can do is continue to stress the importance and the way in which this virus is so vicious and spreads so easily. It's just important to keep getting that message out there. But I agree with you. I've been in places as well where individuals don't have on face coverings. I don't think anybody has said specifically that people should be wearing gloves. I know many people are. But the face coverings are definitely something that we want to encourage.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Brown.
No, no questions.
Okay. We'll circle back around before we open it up to Counselor Fenton, followed by Counselor Whitfield, if either of you have questions at this time.
No questions. Thank you for all you're doing.
I do have one question. Thank you, Mr. President. To the Commissioner or anybody who can answer the question. Someone did ask me, an essential business, is there's a way that they can get PPE supplies? And I had read somewhere on a website that it says, "Go to your government or your Department of Health and Human Services."
Well, thank you, Counselor Whitfield, for asking that question. We do not have PPE or masks that we can give to the public. Many of the... We do have a hotline, as you know, where the public is calling us. And that's some of the questions that they're asked. And we are telling the public to use face coverings. We do not have the ability to give masks out to the general public. So unfortunately, or other PPE equipment. We have to save those equipments, as you might imagine again, for first responders and the healthcare workers. But thank you for asking.
And we also, all employees now too, so.
I'm sorry. We are also giving them to the employees as well.
All right. Thank you for that. I just wanted to respond with the response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. So at this time, councilors, if you have a question, then just raise your hand, and I will go either in order or if there's someone who has not spoken, then I will call them first. So I see Counselor Brown. You have a question, so I will defer to you first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just seeing if, as far as talking with the administration, is there's... I have a hotline or whatever as far as being able to order some of the equipment. Is there testing equipment that maybe as a body, if some of us wanted to donate, is there some stuff we can buy? I mean, because it seems like, I know on a state level that the federal government is kind of holding us up. Is there something we can do? Can we collectively maybe tally up some funds and maybe come up with some supplies? I mean, because I have a little money under the mattress. If I can pull it out and help, you know, is there something we can do?
Go to your mattress. Yes. Yes. I think that if you have the ability to buy masks, PPE, or any other equipment, we do have a stockpile that we are beginning to try and determine needs across the various sectors, including hospitals, shelters, employees. So if you want to buy equipment, we're happy to receive it, and we will store it.
Yeah, because I'm just curious. Because I keep hearing everyone donating this group. I'm like, nobody told me. Can I pull some of my... I need to give you, can I give you some of my money to help?
Absolutely. You know, yesterday I said, "Ask not what your city can do for you. Ask what you can do for your city." And that really is about, we do need help too. We need individuals to help us with many things. So thank you for asking, Counselor Brown.
We receive donations daily. As a matter of fact, this morning, we got 200 more N95 masks from Eastman Corporation. So we're mindful that this is in a two, three, or four-month timeframe. That six months from now, our first responders are going to need masks and PPE. So whatever we get, we're holding on to and really being frugal with them as best we can.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Ramos.
Thanks, Mr. President. My next question, or my question is, I've been keeping track of these numbers daily off the website. And I noticed that from Monday till today, a three-day period, the increase of deaths in Massachusetts, the increase of cases in Massachusetts was 17%. The increase in deaths was 46%. And that's my numbers off of the coronavirus numbers by state. Is that a trend that, that's a bad trend? More hospitalizations, but tons more deaths. Are we predicting what the hump is or where the apex is at this point, Helen?
I don't think we can predict that. But what I will tell you is that Massachusetts is experiencing a surge right now. If you look at the number of deaths over the last three to four days, you see that it's escalating. So I think we're beginning to see that we are reaching a point where it is a surge. And if you look at what the hospitals are telling us, they're telling us that their numbers, as far as admittance is concerned, appears to be flat. But what we're seeing as far as cases are concerned, the numbers are increasing, the deaths are increasing. So we are in a surge. And hopefully, this surge will only last, and I say only, that we will look at the next seven to 10 days and hopefully see the numbers begin to go down. But they're going to go down slowly. This is not going to be like it all drops off at once. It's going to continue. But hopefully, the numbers will begin to decrease and be manageable. The only thing that's going to really help us is the ability to do widespread testing and those tests for antibodies to see who has had the virus, and then vaccination. Those are the three things that will help us really get behind this in a way that is consistent with where we all want to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Letterman.
My question is for TJ. TJ, when you say, when you mentioned earlier, and we all saw the press release and the mayor, that the city is putting in place a hiring freeze and a spending freeze. Hiring freeze is self-explanatory. Can you explain what we mean by a spending freeze?
Yeah, so the spending freeze is for all nonessential items that the private plan are purchasing. You know, what comes to mind is office supplies, office furniture, different things that just don't seem like it's fully essential at this point. So what we're doing is, as the recs come in through the departments, we are looking at them and asking, you know, why is this necessary expenditure at this time? And we're just going to reject those recs that don't seem like they are needed right now at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
So the department needs it to perform operations. So we're going to maintain all core services. You know, DPW is going to do all of their services, police, fire. Everyone's going to continue doing their services. We just want to make sure that we're not buying extra supplies and materials that we just don't necessarily need at this time. The hope is to actually generate free cash to use for next year's budget deficit to address the loss of revenue that we're going to face.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I had a similar question to Counselor Ramos. And so I'm fine with that answer that was previously given. I guess the related question would be relative to the municipal budget cycle. Normally, we'd be, you know, discussing that right now. So what is the plan right now in terms of the next budget for the fiscal year? Have we thought about, you know, how we'll move forward with that? When we'll see it presented? What hearings will look like? What do we think on that right now?
Yeah, so the big thing right now is we're waiting for the House and Senate, who haven't tipped their cap on what they want to do. They were waiting for the outlook, economic outlook that happened the other day. What I have seen and read and spoke to is they're doing, we're dealing with one crisis at a time. We'll get to the budget in due time. They have recommended we do a 1/12 budget, which is a one-month budget. Just so the council's aware, we are actually working on a three-month budget to get us through the summer. And those are usually austerity budgets, where they're just bare minimum levels of service and staffing, just to kind of get through. Because the last thing we need is to fund it at this year's levels and then have state aid drop off so much that we have to go into a layoff mode.
And we haven't done any furloughs or anything as of yet, right?
Not at this point.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ, a quick question, more of a clarification regarding the recent news article about MGM payments. I believe, if I read correctly, that it was reduced. If that's the case, why is that?
So they reduced their payment by about $2.3 million. The Mass Gaming Commission, in a meeting last week, gave some relief to MGM. We subsequently sent a letter to them saying, "We want the payment in full. We'll work together collaboratively." And I think we're just trying to, we'll figure it all out and we'll kind of make us whole. It's just a matter of timing. The president of MGM has committed to kind of working together with us, trying to figure out the revenue piece. Ted, I don't know if you have any more? It's a question about MGM's short payment and then the Gaming Commission, if you want to add anything else.
No, no, just more, the $5.6 million in loss that you mentioned earlier, that does not include that reduced payment, does it?
Right. So the number that has been reported was just our revenue as a city lost due to lack of permits, lack of building permits, lack of motor vehicle excise, all the different revenue that we generate, the local source of revenue that we generate. So the loss of MGM, short of the MGM...
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Gomez, did you still have a question?
Yeah, but it was more for Tim, maybe Tom can answer a little bit to it. And it's more that, I know that today, the second phase is due for, at 3:00 PM, and I just wanted to know, you know, what was the application process, where we were at? I know we're dealing with a bigger pot of money, bigger scope of businesses that we're, you know, we're telling them that they can apply. And obviously, you know, April 16th is today, and 3 o'clock is three hours away, and I don't know if you had an update on that.
Tim's update this morning, Counselor Gomez, was that he thought that we would be able to announce the recipients at this time next week. So they're in the process now of, obviously, you know, gathering all the information, scoring and so on, and he thought that next Thursday or Friday, the mayor would be announcing who those recipients were.
Do you know if, thus far, if we've gotten a high volume of people that have applied? Did he give any of those updates, that we had like a lot of people apply, or a lot of businesses essentially?
He said that it was very robust, and a lot, there was a lot of interest generated. As you can imagine, a lot of the restaurants are hurting right now, so yes, there's, there's a lot of interest in, in that relief that, that fund represents.
Counselor Brown. Still have a question, Counselor Brown?
It was more of a statement, if, I was just reaching out as far as, I don't know if it's appropriate, but if there's any state or senate level that you guys need, if you guys want to reach out to me, I can make sure, even if there's legislation, anything you need to be drafted, just reach out to me and I'll make sure that it get done.
Thank you, we'll, we'll do, we'll do that, Mallow, and there may be some work that still needs to be done with regards to Homer DeBarry, that Bill Baker may be reaching out to you about.
Yeah, we, we have it, it's already, on that, it's already, we, we had it brought out of a third reading, so everything should be set with that.
Yeah, my understanding from Billy Baker is that, since the Constitution requires a vote, is the Senate's still trying to figure out how to do an actual roll call vote on it, since it's a land bill, so.
Yeah, just, just give me a call a little later, and I'll, I'll, I'll work on it, I'll make sure I handle it.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. So I don't see any more questions in the queue, so I will ask a quick question, and then, and then we can wrap up. Tom, in relation to the Prime the Pump Grant, is there a scoring indicator for being a minority business?
That I'm not sure of, Counselor, but I can get you that answer today. I think, I think that there is, there's a matrix, but I'll, I'll double back and send you a text later on.
Yeah, and I'd like to know how many, I'd like to have the matrix, that would be great. And the only reason why I say that is because, you know, I do have a concern that, you know, this virus is disproportionately impacting minorities in much higher rates than it is other groups. And so, you know, my hope is that we will take that into consideration when we are distributing this funding in hopes that the minority businesses certainly get their fair share of funding, if not more than their fair share. So Counselor Whitfield, I'll let you follow up and add to that, if you have a question related to that, and then we'll close out.
Yes, it is related to that, but since Tom is getting the matrix, if he can share with all of us, because my question is, I think in the last Prime the Pump application, if an organization had any problems with like police, any tax-related, any tax issues with the city, or any type of, I forgot what they're called, I can't think right now, old age, but anything like that, that they wouldn't be eligible? So I wanted to see if those criteria were still in the grant application as well.
Yeah, we did have a conversation with Tim Sheen about folks who don't own properties whose landlords are behind on taxes. We're not going to hold the petitioner, the person looking for the grant responsible for that. So that's not going to be a criteria that's going to work against someone, so that, that part we worked out.
What about if, so if the property cited, I mean, the business itself is cited, if they had any issues with the law, did y'all talk about anything like that?
That didn't come up, Tracy, but I'll, I'll talk to Tim, and I'm going to ask him to give Justin a call this afternoon, and then go over all that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. I see Tom on my clock, I have eight minutes left from the time we started with respect to a 45-minute meeting. So I do have Counselor Letterman, who has his hand raised now, so if we could entertain that question, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Counselor Letterman.
Thanks, Chairman. Just on the Prime the Pump Grant, one thing that I have discussed with Tim and just want to make Tom aware of, as they think about future aid, is I, you know, I know that nonprofit organizations that have employees in the city currently aren't, weren't able to access the latest round, and Tim explained during my town hall that was due to the HUD funding, having already reached the maximum percentage that could be allocated to nonprofits. But I know there are a number of small nonprofits that, that are trying to continue operations in the central capacity, or just avoid laying off workers. And so I know Tim said he was open in the next rounds of funding, so I just wanted to put that out there to see if we can include some of those organizations in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Gomez, did I see your hand raised?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Tom, TJ, Solicitor, and Commissioner, we certainly appreciate it. Just some housekeeping for the, for my colleagues. We are going to another meeting for those who weren't on the phone earlier on Tuesday, same time, 11:30 to 12:30, and we are going to be joined by Senator Lesser, as well as Senator Welch, who just confirmed while we were on this Zoom call. So if you're interested in receiving their updates in terms of what it is that is happening at the state level with respect to COVID-19 in the Senate, then please join us again on Tuesday from 11:30 to 12:30.